People, we ask constantly for your wisdom, your discernment, your blessings on us as individuals, on everyone in this room, on each of their families, and on Montgomery County. We glorify you for what you have done and the strength and power that you are in control. Even when the world feels very out of control, we know that we have a God that is in control. And we thank you for that, and we love you, and we trust you, and we receive your blessings. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call a roll now. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Chairman Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Present.
Commissioner Sankey.
Here.
Vice Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we have no one that's signed up to address the commission, so let's move forward. Okay. I declare a public hearing is open for an event license for Jessa Reed Lane from September 18th to 19th, 2021. Anybody to speak on that? Hearing done. Hearing closed.
We'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting of August 17th, 2021.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
We're not rolling yet.
I might have signed them.
Oh. Mine's up now.
Mine's up now, too.
I got it now.
Doug, does yours pop up?
Not yet.
We just started going at it old school.
Yeah.
What we gonna do when you gone?
I don't know.
Don't know about all that, no.
Okay. First one is done, yeah.
Consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
We will have a presentation of the proposed 2021-2022 operating budget, construction programs fund budget, and the emergency management communications district board budget for review and comments.
Good morning. You have in your packet a summary of the three budgets for consideration. They'll be voted on at the next meeting. First, you've got the 2022 operating budgets for the general fund and other funds, the 2022 construction programs budget, and the 2220-22 emergency management communications district board budget. I believe they start on page seven. I wasn't as good as numbering with the new system. If you're looking at the summary, the total general fund and other budgeted funds are $122 million. That's compared to $112 million in 2021. That seems like a really large increase, but last year's budget was budgeted for anticipated decline, so we're kind of catching up two years' worth of budgets there. Projected revenues to cover those expenditures, $120 million. Fund balances of $2.1 million are budgeted to cover the difference in 2022. And the main, those fund balances are basically coming from road capital projects, which is common. And included in that number is the general fund. It's a balanced budget with revenues and expenses of $85 million compared to $76 million for 2021. And again, that increase is kind of taking up for the COVID declines we anticipated last year. And one reason, we do really conservative budgets. So when we did 2021, we did anticipate revenue declines, mainly in sales tax. They didn't materialize. That was very good. Lodging taxes did, but the sales tax and other revenues that we got this year offset that decline. And expenditures, we already kind of had a little conversation about the salary. So if you look at expenditures, the pay plan added about $4.5 million to the budget. We anticipated that was a pay plan that personnel presented. We implemented, well, it's going to implement October 1. And because of that significant pay plan increase, we did not budget for employee merits because those plans were, like I said, they ranged from 14 or 13, total with the COLA of 13% up to 19%. But because we knew that increased expense was coming, the operating budgets, the departments were again asked to level fund in anticipation of the budgets going up for that. So that's just a summary of those budgets. There's a lot of work that goes in behind it. I appreciate all the department heads. They get their budgets in. But that's just a summary. And then separate budget for the construction program budget. That budget is $1,860,000 for maintenance and improvements to county facilities. The money that's there to fund that was received in prior years, so the fund balance will be used to cover that. The emergency management communications district board, that is for 911 activities and managed by the sheriff's office. The total revenue and expenses for 2022 is $876,940, with $146,840 coming from fund balance. And again, this is just a summary of the proposed budget for your review consideration, and it will be on the next agenda for approval. And any questions?
Move, move.
Second.
Any objection?
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl, for all your work.
Oh.
It's an extraordinary amount of work that you put into this.
Yes, thank you, and again to the departments as well.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Danny moved.
Been moved, been moved to second, ladies.
This will be voted on at the next meeting. This will be voted on at the next meeting.
Okay.
It's presented during the formal session of the first meeting in September.
So then we don't need to take any action on this?
No. The action is taken at the next meeting.
Do we just close it out?
So the next item is to consider the alcohol license application for the Latino Festival for September 18th and 19th.
Move approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider amendment number one to the contract, no, I'm sorry. Consider amendment number two to the contract with Borden Dairy of Alabama for milk and juice products for the youth facility detention.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider amendment number one to the contract with the Bridge, Inc. to manage and operate the Davis Transitions Program.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
I'll abstain.
Oh, well, we got one extension.
Consider amendment number two to Foley Products Company for concrete pipe for the engineering department.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a renewal amendment to income work software license agreement with Assessment Advisors LLC for web-based software for the appraisal department.
Move approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a contract for GAM Web with Keat Consulting Services regarding GIS software training and support for the appraisal department.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider renewal of a software maintenance agreement with Environmental Systems Research, Inc. for the appraisal department.
Move approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider renewal of Pictometry Connect Custom Access License Agreement with Pictometry International Corporation for the appraisal department.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider an agreement with Pictometry International Corporation regarding aerial photography for the appraisal department.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider to recognize and deny a claim regarding Crystal Mendoza for the county commission.
Move approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies with the addition by Commissioner Harris of $1,000 to the NAMI Walk.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education with the addition from Commissioner Harris, $2,000 to Brew Tech, $2,000 to Brubaker Middle School, $2,000 to Brubaker Primary School, $2,000 to Danley School, $1,000 to Peter Crump, and $2,000 to Vaughn Road Elementary School.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue with the following additions. $10,000 from joint revenue to short the Squirrel Literacy Initiative. $1,000 to Brantwood Children's Home from Commissioner Singleton. $1,000 to Brantwood Children's Home from Chairman Dean. $20,000 to Community Action from Chairman Dean. $5,000 to the Step Foundation from Commissioner Harris. And $1,000 each from Commissioner Sankey and Chairman Dean to NAMI.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered. We missing Mr. Singleton. There we go.
Consider budget change request number one for the appraisal department.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider budget change requests numbers eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13 for county commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider budget change request number nine for the engineering department.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider budget change request number three for the youth detention facility.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the county commission for manager of public affairs.
Move for approval.
Ray, Ray.
Second.
Don't leave yet. Don't leave yet.
Called out.
Any objection?
Trying to slip out.
So ordered.
Consider position fill request for the detention facility for corrections officer trainee and corrections officer corporal.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider position fill request for the engineering department for our county road equipment operator one and two.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider position fill request for the probate judge's office for an administrative support specialist and a customer service clerk.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider position fill request for the sheriff's office for two deputy sheriff trainees and a public safety communications dispatcher.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider a position fill request for the district attorney's office for a receptionist secretary.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
Consider travel training requests for engineering, finance, risk management, and the sheriff.
So moved.
Second.
Any objection? So ordered.
That's all our items.
Mr. Turner, you have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Just want to ask you to keep the family of Dr. Jefferson Underwood in your prayers. Dr. Underwood passed away this morning after an extended illness. Been a long time friend and my physician, so you would just keep them in your prayers.
To Mrs. Sankey?
Uh, no, sir.
To Mrs. Walker?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
To Mr. Harris?
No, sir.
I would like to, I guess this is proper timing. I'd like to recess back into our informal session. Can I do that? Instead of closing this meeting out?
Yeah, I think you can. I understand your reasons. Why not just make a motion to do so?
Yeah, I'd like to recess. Recess, get back into our informal session.
Make a motion to recess back into formal session.
Second.
Into the interim.
All right. Okay. And the reason I'm doing this, there's some things that we didn't get a chance to talk about. We need to do some housekeeping instead of the commission. There's a lot of things we have not talked about. And I think we need to look at, we talked about a work session for an hour. We probably need to look at a work session for longer than an hour so we can start the meeting on time. So that's up for discussion, group. What you think?
So have our work session from 9:00 to 10:30?
Either way.
And then have a formal?
Let's start at 8:30.
Oh, we like this 9 o'clock. Don't we like 9 o'clock?
I love 9 o'clock.
Tuesdays at 9:00 has just been life-altering.
Hannah, you do not have a vote. No, you don't need to hear. You be gone.
But we could also start on time at 9:00. Is something to think of. Because sometimes we're a few minutes after 9:00. So we could start at 9:00 sharp. Or, I mean, do you think if we did 9:00 to 10:15? Or is that too oddball of a time?
9:00 to 10:30.
Yeah, 9:00 to 10:30.
Yeah.
Doug, you like earlier?
I like early.
You're an early bird.
Yeah.
I'm sure we can come to agreement because there's a lot of things that we are not getting done. It's like when we voted on the Davis treatment. I wanted to ask Ray and come down, Ray.
We just feel too rushed during our?
Yeah, we feel, we're rushed. We're not asking all the questions. Commissioner Harris had some concerns about Davis treatment. I had some concerns about it. So, and we hear a lot of things out in the open in the community about what's not happening down there. So we hear two different stories. So we know you're short on employees and stuff, so let us know what you think the problem is down there. What do you need? What do you all need down there? Well. We need, raise your right hand. Where it tells truth, nothing but truth, God. Yeah, I tell you. With all this stuff, we hearing too many different things.
Well, I mean, what kind of problems have you heard that we're having?
We're facing people not getting along. It's a lot of things.
Well, I think one of the biggest things are the?
Know you're short on employees?
Well, we're not short.
Well, you're not now?
Not now. I mean?
You got the full people that they have already?
All right, he's over the?
I know that, but I'm still, he's down in that facility. So we hear conflicting stories about that and the Davis treatment.
Well, I swear there have been shortages as in the detention facility with those juvenile detention officers. I'm not sure what the status is on filling those positions. I know they've been working with it. But as far as probation officers, I'm not sure how many vacancies there are.
Now it's time out. You know, we hear all the good things. We bring all the good things out to the public, but they're hidden things that are not being said. And I think you and we are the first ones that need to know these things. So if you don't have anything, if you have no concerns, we don't need to talk to you.
Well, as far as the Davis program, we're happy with it because we have seen a significant decrease in committing our children to the Department of Youth Services. I brought Mr. Spurlock, the executive director, from Gason here to answer any questions that you may have.
I did, and I'd much rather do that. I know I missed a couple of your calls, and you were out of town. I think we ought to get together and talk about it. A part of the contract, a part of the agreement, was that we would receive periodic reports on the progress and what was occurring under that contract. And I have yet to see one. In other words, the number of individuals that are being served, the type of services that are being delivered, and if you're measuring your results, what kind of results are you experiencing? Those types of things are the type of things that I'm interested in.
Okay. Our report has been, since our last meeting, the report was forwarded to Ms. Colton before you all.
To who?
Ms. Colton.
I forwarded that on to you. It was a one-page summary of their annual report. I can't remember the numbers, but it was sent on.
Okay, I got to refresh myself on the agreement and see how often those reports were supposed to be done. But we'll talk, I'll take a look at the report, and then we can talk.
Okay. If I can. As far as that part you mentioned about not receiving the quarterly reports, that was put in the contract in 2016. And to be honest, we didn't see it. You know, it wasn't like the same contract that we'd had all those other years. And nobody's brought it up since 2016. And we'll be sure you get a quarterly report that one.
That's interesting. I bring it up every year.
I mean, we got a contract of $400,000, $500,000, $1,000,000. Nobody at your department saw what was that being asked?
Well, there's yearly reports submitted every year. And then also Ray and him get annual reports and quarterly reports, too. We just haven't been sending those reports to you guys. And that was our, that's our oversight.
Well, we'd like to see them.
I guarantee you'll have them.
Okay.
Commissioner, just let me know when you want to meet. I'll be. I said, would you let me know whenever you want to meet? I'd be glad to meet with you.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
I think I got your number now.
Okay. Anything else?
The next thing, you know, Rodney came up today talking about, and our risk manager talked about security. And that was very important. But what concerns me is security when we talk about our employees and administration. You know, we had gone without a deputy administration, a deputy administrator for some time. And it's always been my philosophy that we, the second person in line, be somebody that's competent, that can take over when the main person is gone. And that concerns me. I look at, not picking on your show, but I look at you, and you got an assistant. You came in on the sandal when I was here, and you walked right in. I'm concerned now that the person behind you, are they ready to walk in behind you? Okay, Rodney, have you got anybody that's going to be able to walk behind you? See, we can't just shut down. This county can't shut down. We got to have, talk about succession. Who's in charge? Like the other day when we were behind the, when Spont was in here by herself. You know, when she's not here, who's in charge? But now we fixing that. So that brings me to, we've been to lose Hannah. And Hannah's done an outstanding job. And we're going to have to have somebody that's equivalent to Hannah or even better than Hannah. So we can't wait to put that out there so people, so we leave it out. These are things we got to make sure we do on time. Because, Dan.
But you're going on the right track there, but you should have stayed on Rodney just a little bit longer.
Go ahead. That's okay. You go back on.
Because I saw something that kind of bothers me. Maybe he hasn't dropped it yet, but if we still call him interim, I mean, I need to know why we're doing that. Why haven't?
No, he is. He is. No, he is, he is, uh, I'm sorry, Rodney, what's your title?
My law.
Senior Technology Manager.
Yes, Senior Technology Manager.
No, 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 no. The one I saw was interim director of, uh, of, of IS.
You saw that today?
He's in a permanent position as the senior manager of the IT department.
What, 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 is, is, what was Lou's o- what, what was Lou's position?
It was the chief information technology officer over the city and the county, and when we split those positions, personnel looked at the job descriptions, and this is the position that was created in lieu of the joint position.
And that position is called what? Cause, I mean, the last thing I got said interim, and I'm saying, he, he shouldn't be interim, or whatever he is.
He's, he's not interim.
Okay, but we need to be updated, whatever needs to, we would know.
Yeah, cause I mean, that, that was, that was, my concern was, we, we have him in the job, he's doing the job, and, uh, we have, we should have already determined whether or not he's gonna keep the job, and I'm thinking we have. So he shouldn't be, he shouldn't be, uh...
I, I don't know where it was referenced as, as interim, but that was a mistake.
Okay, all right. All right, my mistake. Uh...
Okay, and, uh, well, like I said, I believe in succession, the, the right people in line for succession. You know, I have no problem with, very excited, he gonna leave. You got, uh, the other chief right there that's capable of being, taking charge, very capable. Uh, next thing, I'm moving kind of fast. We talked about risk, risk management, not risk manager, but, uh, no, help me out, Dan.
What's that?
Uh, grant, grant writing department. And we talked about that two or three weeks ago. You know, it's job description already out there for grants, rent, rent department or what have you. City's supposed to be having one, we supposed to have one. We need to move on it. There's money out there. There's money out there. You know, we can't sit on these things. So we need to put that out there. We need to put the, uh, public information off of the job out there. We need to go, go, you know, be proactive and do these things. But I do believe it's succession. I hope the rest of you understand where I'm coming from. You know, I get scared when we don't have people in charge, and people capable of doing the kind of business. We got some very capable people in charge now, but what happens after that if they can't make it to work the next day? So that's my, that's my concern. We come in and we, we do our hour, or whatever it is, but I think we kind of being a herd too many times, and not get stuff done what we supposed to do. I know the probate judge met me outside telling me that he had a leak out there, at the place out there. So how many times that leak been going on out there?
This was, uh, related to the air conditioning. It was a clogged line, and they've repaired it.
How many leaks they had out there?
But there's been problems with the roof.
Whether it rained, whether, whatever, how many leaks? I'm just saying those things that we have to put on the top of our priorities a bit, and the preventive maintenance, we be paying so much money now. We got to talk about the thirty billion for the jail. We got to do that. We just can't keep putting it off. We got to find ways to make sure it being done. So we, we can look back and say we did the right thing, not saying we didn't do it. So. Anybody else have that concern? I hope so.
Yeah, well, it's, uh, there, there, there is a communication problem. Uh, there's a lot of stuff I don't find out until, you know, late. But that, I think, I think that's the main thing. The main thing is communication. Uh, we, we, we need to know what the issues are, and then, uh, you know, as a group, uh, we need to work together on, on, on these things and, and make specific assignments to people to follow, uh, different things among us.
Right.
In order to make sure that things get done. But in order to do that, the information has to be, uh, assimilated so that everybody knows what's going on and, and, uh, and, and everybody know what their responsibility is toward, uh, having that done. But, you know, first of all, information has to get to, to the commission, and then it has to be, uh, distributed among the commission, so the commission, so that we, we, we know about it, so we can get it done. But I agree. I mean, we've already talked, we already may have known that we wanted to. I think, I think we're all in agreement that we would want to establish that department. And my, as far as, my thinking was that we're already in the process of drawing up what we need on that. We're moving in that direction. If we're not, we should be. Uh, uh, cause we're getting ready to spend a lot of money, and, uh, we're talking about stretching that money. And, uh, one of the ways of stretching that money is gonna be through grants, and, uh, we're gonna have to have a grant writing department, not just a grant writer, one person. It's gonna have to be an area that's responsible for doing that. And, and we need to draw plans on what the, what it's gonna look like, who's gonna report to, what, what's gonna be those responsibilities. I think that, that should be already in the works. Uh, we agreed on that, and, uh, what we're gonna do about the jail, uh, in that, that work. Somebody should be working on a plan to bring it to us on, in terms of that. I, I agree. But, uh, the, the, the thing is that the information is not, I don't think the information is getting to the commission in a manner that it should be.
Doug?
Yeah, I do have, uh, we do need to start making plans on the jail. We could move it in that direction to get the jail repaired. That needs to be high priority for us now.
Mr. Sankey?
Well, I agree with you, uh, in terms of the succession plans. They certainly ought to be in place, but while we look for people to fill the various positions, uh, that might become available, we can't be so stuck on the status quo. We gotta look for progressive thinking people, people who are not, you know, afraid to, to come in with new ideas. It seems like sometime we just, we try to, we delay because we're trying to pick people that's not gonna change the status quo. And so I am concerned about that, uh, you know, that we, we get people, uh, on the, the personnel roster, and we start taking a look at them in a more timely manner as opposed to trying to get folks who fit the picture that we've had all the time, and that may not be what we really looking for. And so I'm concerned about that. As far as the jail is concerned, I suppose we'd need to, it seems like a lot of money, uh, to be spent. I've had to talk with the sheriff. I thought maybe we should buy some land and, uh, start a farm or something, uh, with thirty-five million dollars. Uh, but it seems to be a lot of money, uh, you know, to put into the building, but if it's necessary, I suppose, uh, we could do that. But I sure would like to start thinking about different ways to, to do, uh, justice involved, uh, the justice system and with justice involved individual. I sure would like to find different ways other than just housing them and spending a lot of money, uh, on mortar, bricks and mortar.
I don't think you can put them work on a farm no more.
Well, Jeff, he made that clear that we couldn't do that.
They used to do that. I don't think they do that no more.
It would be nice to buy some acres and, you know, try to do it a different way.
Well, one of the things that when we started community correction, that's kept a lot of guys out of, out of jail. And I know that, uh, Commissioner Harris served on the committee, and some other people served on the committee. That's where they was started. You know, we have a, we just have to find ways to, to make money off our jail, and I think she had to do a good job with federal inmates and all that money that he brings in. Nobody ever realizes that. That's a lot of money he brings in, just housing a federal inmate.
But we were, we were, I mean, I don't know, community correction was headed in a direction that kind of, that, that would have really helped, uh, us as the county. In other words, um, they have one up in, I think it's Shelby County, where the community corrections actually handle the dips, the dips and the dumps.
Right.
You know what I mean? In other words, uh, people that violate parole, instead of going back to prison, they go into community corrections. They have confinement areas where they can come in and, 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 and either, either they're confined there completely, or they, they come in, they sleep there, and they get up and go to work. When they get off work, they come back. And we were looking at that when I was on the board. I'm no longer on the board, so I don't know what they're looking at now, but, uh, but that would be a way to ease some of the pressure off of the jail. But the thing, the, the, the thing about that, that, that jail up there, we got, we need to talk about that. That's a separate session, I think. We, we have, I, I think, quite frankly, we have too much capacity up there. You know? And, and, and as long as we have it, we're gonna have to keep it maintained. We're gonna have to keep it up. If you don't do nothing to it, it'll rust out and deteriorate, and we just have none. But we, 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 we need to really look at it and fix whatever needs to be fixed, but to make sure our capacity is right.
Run, I know we didn't talk about the tan star. You want to go back to the tan star, or whatever you want to say?
No, I, I, I guess we have two, we have two, we have two solutions. Either continue to begin on Tuesdays at nine AM and do informal from nine to ten thirty, and then start the formal at ten thirty, or, uh, I mean, Doug likes starting at eight thirty. He might be on an island. Anybody else?
Start at eight thirty.
I know, and it took me six years to get it to nine. Um, or we could do, you know, what we used to do is have the work session and the formal session. Then it was kind of assumed we would go back into work session mode if we need it, and we often did need it. So we can leave it as it is and just know that we're gonna stay and finish the work session after the formal, or give a few more minutes for the...
At eight o'clock, he's on the iceberg.
Yeah, let me tell you something. I know I'm up here with two people that love, they loved at nine thirty, that Dan and Ron.
Yeah.
Nine.
I can go along with the nine, with the nine to ten thirty.
Yeah.
And then, uh, start the meeting at ten thirty. I can go along with it.
I mean, that gives us another thirty minutes to get...
Yeah.
We usually run about thirty, fifteen minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes over, and that'll, that'll, that'll cover it and give us a break.
Is there some type of rule that say we have to finish at a certain time?
Our rule, we make the rule.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't see anything wrong. Stand as long as we have to. Oh, nine o'clock, start time is perfect.
After advertising, but...
Yeah.
But we can make the meeting time.
Yeah.
So do you like the, the nine to ten thirty?
Yes, that's ideal.
And then formal session at ten thirty.
We can stay as long as we want to, just don't get here before nine.
Well, we have to, we have to formally announce what time our meeting begins. It's why there has to be a set time. Then, yeah, we can stay as long, we can stay all day. Don't y'all want to? Um, but, yeah, we just have to have established times.
Yeah.
So nine until ten thirty.
Nine, nine, nine to ten thirty for the work session. Ten thirty, formal se- formal session starting at ten thirty.
Okay.
And we'll announce that change.
Uh, no reflection on any one person or any two people. This new system we got here, what happens if Hannah's gone, Tammy's not here? What happens? What's the backup plan?
We have other people trained to...
Well, when you're training people sometime, it can be good sometime if you let them do it while the other people are here. And all I've seen is the same people doing the same thing, and, uh, the other people, I like to see who you got trained and how well they work on it. So when are they being trained? When we're not in the meeting?
Yes.
Come on, we need to be, we need to be in a meeting. So we, see what's going on.
We'll, we'll show you at the next meeting.
Well, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Okay. Anybody else got anything else? I guess a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All of them say aye. Aye.
I don't see, I don't hear any.
Yeah.
Move on.